Welcome, everybody, to our study session Thursday, October 5. And we've got packed agenda. First up is Mr. Gavin Cooley, and he's going to give us a quick briefing on the Regional Homeless Authority Discussion. Welcome. Thanks for coming. And you're going to give us a briefing, but give us time for questions, too.
Great. Good morning, Council President, council members, and really appreciate that you're having this regular update at the study sessions. We've certainly progressed a long way on the regional conversations, and Councilmember Bingle has been there for many, many meetings, on and offline, and likewise, Council President, you and others, and meeting with other council members. And it does comes down to a whole lot of very technical details that matter a lot, and we're at that stage right now. So we're meeting every other week with members of the different jurisdictions. In this case, Council President Kinnear, Councilmember Bingle, and key staff like Nicolette Occultree and others are showing up from the city. And we have two representatives from the county and from seven other municipal jurisdictions within Spokane County, meeting every other week from 3:30 until 5:30 at Inovia Foundation. And people are welcome to come to that meeting if they would like. If that's not a convenient two-hour meeting in people's afternoons, they can go and watch it on Zoom the very next day. So, for instance, today, we'll have that meeting from 3:30 to 5:30, and that'll be posted on Zoom tomorrow. So we're kind of into that active phase of where we're getting into the details that we want to make sure we're sharing out to the public, because that's where a lot of the great feedback comes from, and people need to know, and so we'll have that transparency, where people can see it on Zoom, they can see our meeting notes the next day also. All those things are going to be there to create that transparency. So if people are interested, they could come to the meeting and just sit in if they like. It's an open meeting. Or they could go to SpokaneUnite.org. That's Spokane Unite, one word, dot org, and that's where the Zoom meeting will be posted each day following. And I'll see you both this afternoon. So as far as where we are, we are getting into those just technical details of financing and governance and those small things that matter a whole lot, but they kind of get into the nitty-gritty. And I think we had a number of funding options that we were discussing, and I know you've had a chance to review some of those with Councilmember Bingle. I think what we're settling in on is a general notion that a little slower approach. So we are proposed as the homelessness public development authority on homelessness, housing, health, and safety, but the initial focus being on homelessness activities. And so the dollars track that notion. So we're looking at the HUD pass-through dollars, not the HUD entitlement dollars. So importantly, not the CDBG and other important dollars that pass through this council and others, but the actual dollars that pass through the Continuum of Care Board. And we're looking at an alignment between the new regional authority and the Continuum of Care, where the Continuum of Care would appoint the regional authority as the collaborative applicant, which is a designation under HUD. So you'd really have that one-stop-shop. But the HUD pass-through dollars and then the other regional dollars going to homelessness that come from Commerce, state Commerce. And so that's really what we're looking at as a start-out point. And I think those are going 100% to homelessness response right now, except there is a portion of the HUD dollars, the COC dollars, that go to housing. That will stay in the city, in the proposed, in the proposal. But the HUD/COC dollars that are relating directly to homelessness response would then pass over to that new regional entity at both the city and the county. I think it's important to note that these aren't really tied to any jurisdiction. With respect to just these dollars, it's not like the HB 1590 dollars, where the city has passed those dollars. Other jurisdictions, like the county, have not. Those are something the city has taken ownership of. We're not looking at any dollar specific to a jurisdiction. We're looking at the regional dollars coming through HUD and the COC and the regional dollars from Commerce. So I think that puts all the jurisdictions having the same stake in this regional formation at the outset, where they're all coming in with the regional dollars. Now, if it's, you know, the success we expect it to be, and we show good outcomes, and we measure good outcomes, I'm sure we could talk about doing more, but this is, I think, the go-slow that everybody's been talking about, and make sure that we demonstrate that we're capable of doing what we're indicating that we can. So that's on the financial side. So I just want to pause there and see if there's questions on that initial proposal. Of course, all of this will come back to the council and other jurisdictions for, you know, more detailed discussions, and we'll have a layout of specific dollars, employees tied to those dollars, and all the details that you'll be interested in. But I wanted to just bring that high-level perspective in today.
Yeah, two questions. One, what's the estimated kind of total amount of dollars that that would be, the regional dollars that you're talking about, that would be going to the authority?
Approximately 25 million and about 18 to 22 employees.
Is that annually, or?
Yes.
Okay, and so is there then?
And that depends. There is a variable component, of course. The federal HUD allocation is variable.
Right.
That could change. Likewise, the Commerce allocation could change. You know, if the budget turned sideways at the state, I think it would.
And does that enable you to bond out at all, if there was something on the capital side that you were interested in pursuing?
That would always come, you know, as a PDA, we have that capacity. You know, we are an instrumentality of the municipal corporations that we are here. And so, for instance, if something like that happened, because they're regional dollars, it wouldn't really tie any specific jurisdiction, but we would have to tap into borrowing authority through the city or through the county. Might be something down the road where somebody's standing here asking for an SIP loan to help. For instance, as we've all talked about, one of the centerpieces of this approach is a navigation center that doesn't just put people in overnight housing, you know, instead connects them to services. So that navigation center is central, would certainly require some kind of monetization of a revenue stream to get to that place.
And then, just my other question, could you just describe a little bit more how that relationship with the COC would work? Because you said they would designate the regional authority, and I'm just wondering, at that point, what would the role of the COC be?
The COC would continue in its current role. Right now, the city is the collaborative applicant for the COC, but it would aggregate things. Right now, we have a CHHS board, there's a similar board over at the county, and there's the COC itself, and there's three separate five-year plans. There's a lot of things going on in different places that have to, would come together under this approach. The collaborative applicant, instead of being the city, would be the new regional formation. The COC would become the primary advisory board to the governing board at the regional formation. So you would have that same organization, all kind of the one-stop-shop. They would be working directly with and advising the governing board and the CEO of the new regional formation. We have to work that out with the COC, and those details will really matter when we're in those conversations.
Go ahead.
So does this change anything?
Could you?
Oh, sorry. So what I understand is the valley is not going to be part of this, and does that change any of these budget issues?
No, it would not, because these are all regional dollars, and I think, I haven't heard that yet, but I've heard whispers of that recently.
I thought it was in the paper.
Well, I should read the paper.
I think it's in the paper.
It was a busy morning, so.
I saw it somewhere.
Yeah, that's why I'm hearing it. Okay. Thank you. I will just comment, this was always about collaboration and integration, and we can do that, I mean, if the valley or any jurisdictions decides they want to, you know, continue their own course, then we're just going to have to work extra hard to make sure we understand what they're doing, they understand what we're doing, and we create de facto that same level of collaboration as if they were a member, which could certainly be done.
Yeah, if, in fact, they're considering not participating or kind of walking away from the conversation, I just, I would hope that we could do whatever we could to bring them back. And, you know, I've said this a few times, but, I mean, I really think that we need to defer to some degree to them, because at the end of the day, we need them a lot more than they need us. And it would be really important, I think, that we have a regional approach that has to include the valley, I think, to be successful. And so I, it's kind of frustrating, because, you know, this council, and I know some folks disagreed with the method, but, you know, we listed out a number of things in a resolution, and I think the valley would be apt to do the exact same thing, and then we could really find where those areas of commonality and disagreement are and figure out how to move this forward. So it's a little, I just wish it was more open dialogue to understand the differences that we need to pursue.
Yeah, get to those details. I'm sure we'll get there, and we'll have to earn their trust, the way you're saying, along those points of interest.
And I would just add, too, in one of our meetings, which was a shock to me, but nonetheless, someone from the city of the valley said that they don't, they're handling their homeless problem just fine. And so, in my mind, that means people from the valley are coming here and getting services. So in that regard, yes, you are, because we're helping you do that. And that was a little bit disconcerting to me, that they would, that they would actually say that out loud, quite frankly. So we have a lot of work to do to convince them that it's got to be a group effort, and we do better work together than we do alone. So anybody have, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, I had a question about, I guess, process and community outreach. I know that's been something that's been talked about, but as we're coming up with like a new version of it, do you know if there's plans yet, or is that really going to be decided by the group of like, what's going to be the community outreach after that, to get community feedback before coming for a vote?
What a great question. So we've moved to this transparent process as we kind of grind out these details of finance and governance and those details. But what's going to happen, of course, is it'll get set up, and you'll have employees, and you'll have a CEO, and you'll have a board, and you'll have the advisory board, the COC. At that point, those groups and individuals that are actually running the new formation will hold a very robust public process. Say, you know, if somehow this got voted in before year-end, and shortly after year-end, you'd expect to see a series of charrettes, neighborhood meetings, community assembly, you know, working through the community to make sure you gather that input, the homeless coalition, you know, right down the line. So you'll have a very public process and a robust one, but it doesn't make sense to do it now, because in reality, of course, we're setting something up right now. We're kind, it's almost like the, if you're building a hospital, you have people like me and the council and all the other jurisdictions building the hospital, but if you were talking about the care that's going to be provided, at some point, you'd need the CEO and the staff of the new organization to sit down and really understand what needs to occur there. And that's why we're really deferring that public process until we actually have the people that would be running it to have that listening.
I guess my comment to that is, I don't know why we couldn't do both, I guess. One, before we finalize it, and then again with the new staff. And mine is more like, is the proposal, right, it's working on limited people, I view it as like the UN, we send our delegations and people are watching in the meetings, and we can talk about it. But how do we get that public process on what that new version is before we actually vote on it to implement that? To make sure, do we have the right wings? Do we have the right number of bedrooms in the hospital to go on that analogy, to make sure that that structure's right? So wanting that public process multiple times, I guess.
I don't see a problem with that. I mean, right now, we're grinding out the finances. We're going to next, in this meeting today, talk about governance also, and governance will have an application process. We'll talk about who we're looking for, how do we submit that to the jurisdictions for ratification, all those details. But once we've kind of come up with a soft proposal on what that might look like after many hours of meeting and conversations, I don't see why we couldn't do exactly what you're saying, Councilmember. Love to talk about that.
Councilmember Oerlich, then Councilmember Bingle.
Talking about staffing, CEO, Gavin, can you speak to how close you are to making those hires, and any thoughts on what that process is going to look like to find those right people?
Well, I think what we will have is an application process for the board members, and I think Councilmember Cathcart, you're messing me up with your name tags.
We're just trying to trick everybody.
Yeah. You'd mentioned a caucus approach, and in fact, it is a caucus approach. If you have a member of the city council represented on the new governance, it's one out of seven, and there's, it's essentially a caucus. And so I think submitting a caucus delegation in each of the categories, so if it's public safety, we do have a member of public safety, rather than say necessarily it's, say, chief midal, or the sheriff, or whoever, why not designate the key influencers within that sector and let them decide? If we have, you know, there's questions about tribal representation, there's a spot on the board for the tribes, and we know that there's a number of tribes that are very interested in this and might have differing opinions, just as council members do, that's a caucus moment, where, you know, come together tribes, figure out who can represent you, and that can change over time, but you have that one voice to represent, you know, what your perspective is. So I think we'll go through, find individuals that have significant sway and ability to represent those sectors, whether it's tribal, public housing, private housing, philanthropy, medical, mental health, all those different categories on the board, making sure that we have a caucus of individuals that can represent that sector and help support the new regional formation with leadership. And then let them select who actually sits on the board at any given time. And that's one way it's coming forward. And then, of course, that board will have to select a CEO, and all I can say about that is, this is a provider organization. This is a homelessness response moment. So it will be somebody from the homelessness response system that is respected and supported by the homelessness response system, because we can't ever even imagine that we could be successful at this endeavor if the homelessness response system is not supportive of the CEO and the board and the advisory function of the new formation. So it'll be somebody from that, that world that will have the capability to do that.
Thank you.
And Councilmembers opposed, I would, I would agree that, you know, there's probably a little bit more that we could do to have like particular sessions for the public to be able to hear. But I do want to talk about the amount of effort that's been put in by Gavin and Rick going to these different organizations and speaking and being with the public and getting their feedback, because it hasn't been like, nobody has been able to give input. There's been lots and lots of input. I personally have spent lots of time, you know, at the COC board chair, with, you know, Julie Garcia, Phil Altmaier, I mean, there's, a lot of us have been putting a lot of time into this to get the public feedback. And then we did make it public to where people could watch or attend, we are recording them, and those, but the specific meetings, I think, would be the cap on top of all the public outreach that's been happening, because there has been a lot, not just with us, I mean, our own, you know, Nicolette has been, has been out in the community a lot as well. And I don't, I don't know, I, sorry, Gavin, I hate to jump in. Nicolette, is there anything you'd like to add while we're here? Sorry, is that all?
I do just want to clarify one thing, when he says that the COC board would become the advisory board, that you don't lose sight of the fact that the COC board would still have dominion over those HUD-specific COC dollars, and they would still be the decision-maker on those dollars, and that is something we cannot legally change.
Right.
But I think it's an important piece for you guys to.
Yes.
Make sure you know.
Yes.
Cannot and would not want to change.
That's right.
Yeah.
So we're going to wrap it up. Is there any famous last words you would like to add here?
Well, just that transparent process we're in now is much different than that kind of early nuts and bolts. So Robert Lippman is attending, is the chair of the COC, he's at the table, even though it's fundamentally elected, is at the table and their key staff, the COC is represented there, as is experience matters now. And that's a real large aggregation of largely smaller providers throughout the community, and they're representing one of their, Megan Vincello or a number of other individuals are representing at the meetings each, every other Thursday, too.
Great. Thank you, Gavin, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
And we'll see everybody who's interested at 3:30.
That's right.
That's right.
And before we go on, I'd like to have Ginny Ramos come up and introduce the students in the back of the room. Just, just tell us who they are, and if they want to come up, and what school they're from, how interested they are in running for city council.
This is a group of students from Lumen High School, they're in ninth to 12th grade, and this is their social studies teacher, Trevor.
Trevor, welcome. And just briefly tell us a little bit about them coming here today and what they have gained from this experience.
Yeah, so as was mentioned, we're Lumen High School, we are actually just down the road from here, I believe a couple of you may have visited our school. But those who haven't, we are a high school specialized for pregnant and parenting teenagers in our community. We are a project-based high school, and we just started a new project right now, where we are focusing on the local election, how city government tackles issues and how the community tackles issues. So we are working at the very beginning of a project that will end with us researching issues that are important to us, tying it to how votes matter and affecting those issues, and creating infographics that we publish for the community to help them understand the impact of their votes. Yeah.
That's great. And make sure they understand that governance at the local level impacts their lives greatly, and learn about municipal government, three branches of municipal government, so that's important as well.
Of course, and I believe I have a couple of students who are interested in being in these seats at some point.
Excellent. All right. Let us know, we'll, we'll help any way we can.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thanks you all for coming today. And next up is going to be a scraps discussion with Scott Simmons. And you brought a friend, would you like to introduce?
Is this on?
Yes.
Good morning.
And Scott, you can raise the, the whole thing comes up.
With the white button, a little white.
There's a button.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Oh, yeah. Fancy stuff.
We're fancy.
Good morning, council members. Scott Simmons, CEO for Spokane County. Chris Davis is with me, he's also with the, I'm sorry, we have a lot of Chris's at the county. Chris Anderson is our deputy prosecuting attorney for the civil division as well for the county, so happy to be here. I was invited, so let me know where you'd like to take this.
Sure. I'm going to let council members Cathcart and Stratton start off with some of their concerns, and maybe we can do it, just a Q and A and go from there.
Sure. First, I want to say thank you very much for coming today. Just, everybody really has a background on this, but just to, for everybody in the audience and anybody who might be listening, where this, these scraps discussions started back in the spring, we started getting emails and calls from community members concerned about what was going on at scraps and some practices. And as the discussions continued, we realized that there really is kind of a, we need to align the, what the county, what the county says, what the law is with animal control and what the city says, especially in regards to no-kill. And so we have had this strong desire to collaborate and to have these discussions on what we can do to come together to agree in that area of the no-kill. We've talked a lot about, and have heard a lot about, it's okay for animals to be euthanized because of their danger to the community, they're sick, but the big question in everybody's mind that we think deserves some conversation is that we're euthanizing for lack of space. And that, that is the big hot button right now for everybody and that people that we're hearing from. So we're really glad you're here. We've tried to make attempts, and we've written some letters, and I know that we're going into arbitration on this, but we thought it might be helpful just to have a conversation to see if we're going in the right direction. If you have any answers to. to see if we're going in the right direction, if you have any answers to practices that you might know more about than we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and I just, a little bit more background, too, I just want to add on. So for, and I've mentioned this a few times, so it's broken record, but, you know, in February, March of 2020, we passed an amendment that defined kind of the euthanasia standard at scraps. And that amendment, while we later discovered was in conflict potentially with county code, you know, the intent of that amendment, and was unanimously approved by at least a previous council here and existing county commissioners, without any sort of opposition to it. And so that was, has been sort of the expectation for how some of those decisions were being made for the last couple of years. Early this year, with the new leadership being appointed at scraps, we had attempted three different times to have them come, and this is before any of these concerns were even raised, or at least two of the times were, to have them come and just talk to us and get to know each other, build a relationship, have a good working kind of path forward. And again, multiple occasions, either last minute cancellations or just didn't show up. And then once the kind of controversy started, then there just no engagement at all at that point. And so, of course, we had ongoing conversations between us and county legal, I think weekly, our city attorney was, one of our city attorneys was communicating with county's attorney. Not a lot of progress was happening, but those communications were happening. And so really kind of the crux of what I think brought us to this point, in my mind at least, is just the process overall, the lack of communication, and the decision, the euthanasia decision that was made, knowing full well that we were releasing an ordinance to try and address some of these issues, that we had ongoing concerns, and there had not been any formal engagement with us. You know, we contribute $700,000 to scraps, animal control is a really important thing, doing it in the right way is a really important thing. And so we just want to make sure that we're having the absolute best service with the highest ethical standards possible. And so I think that's where our goal with this conversation slash process going forward and the dispute resolution is how do we align together? Because as we were talking about on the regional authority just a minute ago, I mean, we're stronger together, better policy together, better expectations for the region. And we know there was a situation recently that occurred with a business owner in the city, her daughter, obviously that was a Valley situation, but it just goes to, I think, the concern around why we need a regional approach to these policies. And so my hope is that we can get aligned and find some way forward to continue working together.
Well, that's good to hear. A lot to respond to, and I'll try to provide some context on this. We also agree that a coordinated approach makes the most sense. I think it provides the best value to our community when you have services that are being done at an integrated level, so that our community members, whether they're in Millwood or Deer Park, or in City of Spokane, or the unincorporated area, know the services they're getting. So I think that's a great approach to continue on. I think it's important for the community, because there's been a lot of conversation around it, a lot of incorrect conversation, from my perspective, around the purpose of scraps. And it gets confused a lot. There have been some that refer to scraps as Spokane County Regional Animal Protection Shelter. It's not. Spokane County Regional Animal Protection Services, that's the correct acronym. Their principal focus and their principal charge is animal control and protection. They hap, we happen to have a facility that has shelter space that is an ancillary service only. It is not our statutory obligation to provide that. But because we are oftentimes coming into contact through our animal protection officers for strays or abandons in the community, we get a lot of animals, dogs and cats, into our facility that are picked up by our APOs. And so naturally, it creates a adjacency to be able to provide an area for our community to come and adopt animals. We have, the last number I saw, over 7,000 animals come into our facility on an annual basis. That's dogs and cats. Two-thirds to three-quarters are probably cats. We have a significant overpopulation and issue in our community about with cats populating, not being licensed, and not being, you know, spayed, neutered, and chipped, which creates a lot of other issues with not being able to reunite animals with their owners. It's one of the things that we really try to do consistently is make sure that when we have a pet come in that's licensed, we have a purposeful five-day hold on them so that their owner can come in and get them. Unlicensed is different. We have different times for unlicensed for dogs, it's three days. For cats, it's zero days. We have, because we have so many cats that come into the facility. When a cat comes in, we move it immediately to the adoption floor so that it can find a good forever home, hopefully. But animal protection and control is the primary focus. We are an agency that is ensuring that there is not abuse to animals, and if there is reported abuse, we're responding to it timely. And we're also charged with the animals that do pose a threat to our community. And the nature of scraps is we don't get to come into contact with the best of the best. We get to come into contact with a lot of the worst of the worst. These are, in the case of dogs, these are dogs that are with people that are possibly part of drug rings and stuff, they're raising and training their dogs to protect their areas, and those dogs can be aggressive with other humans and with other animals. And when someone gets arrested, law enforcement, the call comes to scraps. We are the ones that the dog gets surrendered to. So we get dogs into our, into our facility that have some really challenging backgrounds, and we have to make some uncomfortable decisions off of them. At the end of the day, we have an obligation from a risk and a liability to our community to make sure that we are only adopting our animals that are safe to our community. And I know there's been a lot of wonderings and conversations around there, around the euthanases that were done recently. I can say unequivocally, regardless of what our code says, scraps operating policy is not to euthanize for space. We do not. We only euthanize animals that are either end of life, terminally ill, and have been deemed to have a poor quality of life remaining, or dogs that have and pose an untreatable threat to humans and to other animals. That is 100% what we do. And that is directly in compliance with our contract with the City of Spokane. I know there's consternations about the fact that there is a provision in our county code that says we have the ability to euthanize for the, in the event of shelter capacity, but we don't. We have people who care for their animals, care for these dogs and cats that are out there, and want to find a way to get them adoptable to the community. But they have to be safe to adopt to our community. And we are charged with ensuring that safety. And we can't apologize for it, that's the charge. It's part of public safety, it's part of community safety. And we will always be in that situation because of the nature of the animals that we come into contact with. I appreciate the fact that the desire is to try to find a common path forward. I don't think it serves anyone's interest to go through a dispute resolution, but it's something that we had to trigger. The council did pass an ordinance that's directly in violation of our contract. It says, the ordinance in the, and I'll read you, in our contract with the city, it says, "In conjunction with the enforcement of the city's animal control ordinance, the city shall adopt and keep current by appropriate legislative action an animal control ordinance substantially identical to that adopted by the county as it presently exists or as it may here and after be modified, amended, to include all licenses, fees, and penalties." So what was passed is not substantially identical, it's dramatically different from what the county code says.
Can I ask a question? So you said that scraps does not euthanize for space. So if they're not euthanizing for space, couldn't we make this easy and compromise on having that in, having our, because that's what we have, that we don't want them euthanized for lack of space? If scraps isn't doing it, wouldn't, couldn't we just fix the county side that says the same thing? So they're both saying the same thing? If you're not doing it? Does that make sense?
I understand what you're asking, and we've contemplated that at the county. Our challenge is, what happens when the facility is full? What happens when other shelters, Spokaneimal, Spokane Humane Society, animal rescues, adoption, foster people are full and unable to take animals? What do we do with the animals? Because at the end of the day, we cannot, the cost to the city, even if we have the space, the cost to the city to just warehouse animals and keep them in a cage for a long period of time would be astronomical. And it's not good for the animals as well. We know from our, from our experts that animals do deal with, I think they call it cage crisis, or something like that, for prolonged periods of time in there. It's not safe, it's not good, it's not healthy for the animals to be there. So the situation, while we ever want to be in that situation, we don't control the pre-population of animals out there, we don't control the non-spaying or neutering of pets that responsible pets owners should be doing. And so we can't predict what the future looks like, and we only have so much space to be able to have them in, and we want to make sure we have humane conditions. Right now, it's kitten season, I don't know if anyone knew that, I didn't know that. I was out at scraps a couple of weeks ago, and we have 400 kittens that have been turned into scraps, 400. And a lot of these kittens have to be, fortunately, we have a really good network of foster people who will take kittens into their home, because kittens have to literally be looked at every hour to two hours to make sure they're getting fed, they're getting their nutrition, they're not getting into a crisis situation. Sometimes those actually have to go to a pet emergency clinic to get responded to. 400 kittens that we have in, we don't have a space for 400 kittens. And yet, someone comes in off the street, and this is another thing that we try to educate our public, they, people have a kind heart. They stop on the side of the road, they see a batch of 10 kittens, mom is not around. They take the kittens, they bring it to scraps. It's the worst thing that could be done. Now the mama, who is out getting food for their kittens to be able to come back, is no longer there to be able to provide for their kittens. It's an unfortunate situation, because we don't want a bunch of, we don't want 10 kittens sitting on the side of the road, but mom is their car and feeder, and then mom is ben separated from them.
So just a couple of things. One, you know, you made the point, and I understand the perspective that, you know, scraps is not intended to be a shelter, but I guess I would argue as soon as you pick up an animal, you've kind of de facto become that. And I think in terms of just what we're arguing about or discussing is, you know, what is the standards that that part of the service is operating under? And so I think that that's key. The other part is, you know, I would just point out, obviously, if we're not changing that code because we're concerned about space, then we're sort of, again, reserving the right to utilize that aspect of the code, which is a big concern for a lot of folks in our community. And so that's something that I think really has to be, well, I think that that absolutely has to be changed, but I think there's some other pieces as well. And I think where we need to really get to is kind of what is going to be that process for figuring out the alignment, and how we can align and how we can move forward. Because there's obviously some other concerns, too, that have been brought to our attention, a lot of them haven't been flagged as much as this, you know, some related to the trappings and how long, you know, they're left in the traps, and just things like that. And so I think there's a lot of things that need to be discussed and worked out in addition to the euthanasia standard. But the other piece that I think would be super beneficial, we've discussed this in the past, is, and I'm hoping the advisory appointees are going to make this a priority, and that is making sure that scraps changes its operating policy to be more open to the public. And I think that there has been a lot of improvement, no doubt about it, especially since a lot of these conversations have begun, particularly on the social media side. But I just think there needs to be a significant expansion of openness to the public. Folks shouldn't have to make an appointment, they shouldn't have to ring a bell for 30 minutes. If the media calls, it shouldn't take three hours to get somebody to pick up the phone. I think it needs to be accessible to the public so that we can get these animals adopted out. And in the cases where someone, or a pet, an animal has been there for a while, that's where the partnerships come in. And you move that, transfer that animal, that pet to another facility, and vice versa. And so those are the things that I think also need to be happening that would substantially, in my opinion, improve just capacity and things like that. And we've heard from some of the former volunteers and workers that they've had some ideas that have been shot down. And so just what are the plans for creating that openness to the public?
Well, I'm glad you brought up that point. There's a couple of things that I wanted to comment on. I want to be clear for the public, we've been trying to message this over the county, so it'd be helpful if the city's able to echo the same thing, we are open to the public. We don't require appointments. We haven't. We encourage appointments, because if you want to adopt an animal, it can save your spot in line, you can come in and have an immediate view of the animal that you want to adopt. But our hours of operations are Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, from noon to 7:00, all those days. Thursday, we are closed, because we do have to go in and do some cleaning and give the animals some care and loving. Saturdays were open from 11:30 to 5:30, and Sundays were closed. Our front door is not open. We are, we're open through our receiving area. The reason we're not open to the front door is because of safety to our employees, not unlike other businesses that are experiencing the same things. People wander in, the drug issues, the safety of mental health and stuff that's occurring, people wandering, we can't expose our employees to that. So we do have a place on the intake, which there's adequate signage that says, go right around. I've been out there multiple times, I've seen it. So we encourage people to go around through the intake area and come right into the front desk. It just reduces the safety concerns to our employees about having just random people who have no interest in coming in to adopt a pet, see a pet. We are doing it that way. But we are open to the public.
So you no longer have to be buzzed in? You can just walk in?
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Signs at the front door, direct you over to the intake, which is right around the side, and you can go right in that door. So we are open, we don't require appointments, so I just want to make sure that is known to the public. I do think the advisory committee will be helpful in hearing from other ways, hearing and informing on other ways, is that the most accessible? Are those times good? We look at data and stats, we don't just set dates or times based on a whim. We look at when historically people, we have the highest volumes of people coming in, so we try to set our times around that to meet the needs of the community. The other thing I wanted to touch on a bit, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting the county will consider this, but I will point out to you the reality. If there is a desire to hold an unlimited number of animals from the City of Spokane, you are looking at a capital expense to build another facility, you're looking at an operating expense to manage and care for the animals. So I would put that back to the city to contemplate, is that something that you have the budget capacity to be able to handle? Because we don't have these contractual obligations with any of our other jurisdictions, only the City of Spokane. So that would be something that if you're asking that for an additional service, then that's an area you'd have to understand the financial implications for it.
So let me interject something here. Obviously, no, we don't have, we're not sitting on piles of money. I'm wondering what scraps is doing to really push the education piece, so that, I know people are aware they should spay and neuter their pets, somehow, they're not getting the message. What can we do to further educate people that this is a crisis, we can't keep doing this? We also know that people adopted animals during COVID, now they're back to work and they're going, uh-oh, what do I do with this dog and/or cat? And it's, that's become a problem. So what can we do proactively, and how can scraps lead that effort to let people know it's not okay to have an unneutered dog or cat? It's just, it's just not okay.
Yeah, you point out, it is a national crisis, it's not a Spokane County crisis.
Yeah.
And we did have the COVID issue where people were working from home, they wanted a nice furry animal to be able to be by their side, and then they realized, oh, wait a second, I don't want to have to care for a pet, and they come and try to surrender it back. It is a national issue that we're grappling with. It's even the licensing. I mean, national stats say that only 25% of pet owners license their pet, which, then when you come to reuniting your pet, it makes it very challenging. We have 75% of those unlicensed animals coming into our facility, and we have no way to immediately reunite them with a pet. If they're chipped, if they're licensed, it's a phone call, hey, we have your pet, come down and collect your lost pet. We try to work on the education outreach messaging, but it really does take a community to continue to share that information, share the importance of spaying and neutering, microchipping, and licensing your pet. So we can, we're a voice, we're able to push that out, but the more that can be shared, even posting on the city's pages and other community pages as well is very important. So we'd love to have partnering with that. And we do a lot of, I also want to address, we do a lot of partnering with other shelters and rescues regularly. They come through our facility. I just want to make sure that's understood as well. There was a period of time prior to our current director where that wasn't occurring, those relationships were shut off. It was partly before my time as well, but we have been very purposeful about having regular interaction with Spokaneimal, with Spokane Humane Society, with very reputable, trustworthy rescues in the community, to try to find places for dogs and cats to go to if we are running out of space. We have a really good relationship with Spokaneimal. We have a really good relationship with, um, Spokane Animal, they have some great successes with cats. So they oftentimes come into our facility, we transfer cats to them. Sometimes it's just a little bit of a different window time, you know, maybe they're getting some attention at Scraps, but they could get different attention at Spokane Animal. So pets that may not have been adopted, cats that may not have been adopted at, at Scraps can be transferred to Spokane Animal and they have a really good track record of adopting them out. We haven't had good successes with, um, some of our other, uh, Humanes, um, our other shelters with our dogs because we haven't had, uh, what they deem to be really adoptable dogs. And they want to make sure, just like we want to make sure that we're reducing the risk to the community, and they're only placing those dogs with them that, that are going to be adopted out.
Have you considered, um, events that spay and neuter events and advertised to the community, maybe at a reduction in cost or, um, coordinate with area vets so that it's not going to be so burdensome to the pet owner?
Yeah, we actually partner with Pet Savers already, um, to offer spay and neuter clinics at reduced cost to those who are unable to afford it. And we're trying to do that very same thing as, as being able to open part of our community room back up, uh, to allow some spay and neutering clinics on the weekends. Um, we have, we have a veterinary on staff, um, a couple of years, up to three years ago, we did not, so we had to really outsource everything. What we found is for the value to the community and the value for the taxpayers, an ability to have a veterinary on staff actually reduces the cost because we don't have to pay third-party veterinary. And they're, it's not like we're taking business from them, they're very busy as it is. Um, we are actually contemplating bringing in another, uh, vet on because of the volume of the work that we have, we still cannot do all of the, uh, care, immunization, spay and neutering, um, all the animal care that takes place today. So we're actually considering, um, hiring another vet as well.
Okay, so let's have Councilmember Stratton and Cathcart.
This is quick. Um, I totally agree that we don't want animals locked up in cages for long periods of time. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the 14 dogs or 13 dogs that were euthanized, um, looking at their assessments that were, that Scrap sent out, which we appreciated, I want to say some of those dogs were there, was it 2019, 2020? So why were those dogs or some of those dogs kept so long and then just euthanized in 2023?
It's a really great question. Um, I don't want to be critical of previous individuals that work for us. Decisions had been made that I don't agree with and decisions that we're not going to make and going forward. That's not fair for the animal to be in there that long. I'd like to believe that people who were there at the time, um, had a strong belief that these dogs could be rehabilitated. I think at two to three years, it's a pretty strong indication that they couldn't be. There are animals and through those assessments that, that we had performed, um, of I think 18 of them, we identified three that we said, I think there's an opportunity here. They had been in the, the, um, the facility for a shorter period of time. So we've held those animals and we're working with them as well. Um, but again, our, we have to be able to balance, our charge is not behavioral modification with, with dogs. It's again, an ancillary thing that we try to do, but that's not our primary purpose of operating Scraps. Our primary purpose is animal control and, and, and protection. And then being able to allow some dogs to be able to be adopted out, some cats to be able to be adopted out as well into the, into the community. So I personally believe that was unacceptable to have them that long. We will never, we will not do that again. Never is a strong word. During my time, we will not do that again. That's unfair.
Yeah, just a couple of things. So one, you, you mentioned potentially hiring another, uh, veterinarian and, uh, I think there's an opportunity to perhaps, you know, seek out somebody with a lot of behavioral experience. And so I just hope that that would be something that might go before the advisory board for some input, um, in, in that process. And then secondly, on the spay and neuter, uh, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we're at, we're in a housing crisis and so we're taking some pretty big steps on, on housing issues. And so I think anytime you face a crisis, a lot of times you have to step up and do something big. And so if there's opportunities for us as a city to partner with Scraps and the county to help to promote or ensure that those things are happening in a grander scale, like those are conversations that I think should be ongoing and, and be happening. And so, um, I think that would be one. And then lastly, I just want to offer as a rebuttal to your, your comment about the capital expense. Uh, I, again, I mean, this, there was an amendment offered to the ILA, um, and we can disagree on, on the effectiveness, but that amendment was adopted unanimously by the county commissioners. And I would argue that it was either adopted in bad faith, knowing it wouldn't be implemented, and I don't believe that's the case, or we're now sort of changing course and disagreeing with it, in which case, you know, there should have been a conversation if there was going to be an increase in cost back when that amendment was adopted. Because theoretically, we were pursuing that at that time, uh, which would be, uh, potentially increasing the amount of, of animals at Scraps. Um, although the goal again, if you're, you know, um, broadening the, um, the ability to adopt those out, that you wouldn't have those, you know, remaining at the shelter. But, but again, my, my rebuttal to that is those cost discussions should have happened three years ago if that was a, an issue.
Um, let me talk about the veterinary one first. The veterinarian that we have on staff and, and pretty much all vets already go through behavioral training during their, uh, uh, degree, um, pursuit. So that person or persons will have the most experience with animal behavioral training. Um, I don't know that that's really known, uh, well for people.
Excuse me, can I just add something? I don't mean to interrupt you, but, but I will. Uh, my husband was, worked with animals for a number of years. He's a psychologist and his area of expertise was animal behavior. And yes, they do have training, but an animal behaviorist is not the same as a vet taking a couple courses in animal behavior. So I just, I just want to make that clear because there are people that specialize in just animal behavior. And that would be more beneficial, in my view, than having a vet who has had a couple of classes or some training. Because they do a variety of things as veterinaries, but they aren't just working with animal behavior. So that would be my only caveat, thank you.
And I'm not aware of any degreed program that you can go get a behavioral specialist, animal behavioral specialist.
It's a psychology degree.
But there's, there's not courses, animal, behavioral animal assessment is pretty much online, um, stuff. There is no degreed program that we're aware of for people to pursue. So even when you're going out and getting, some of it's life experiences, some of it's actually going on and online and getting training courses and going through them. Um, but my point is that our degreed veterinarian does go through classes and coursework that is aimed at this. It may not be their, um, primary expertise, but it's certainly in their arena. And when they've, when they deal with dogs and animals for many years, they understand the, the traits, the, um, characteristics, the, uh, interactions, the non-verbal cues of, of animals. They see it all the time. So I'm not a behavioral specialist, I'm not a veterinarian, and so I, I'm the worst, I'm the least, um, accredited person to be able to speak to it, but that's my understanding. And then the other peo-, oh, I, I wanted to address Councilman Cathcart's, uh, question on the, on the contract. So before my time, um, but as I read through it, I don't see anything in the agreement that would indicate that, um, any sort of increased space needs would be contemplated or addressed in there. There were some adjustments at the time for costs, I, I don't know exactly what those were contemplated. Um, the, the, uh, contract did call out, um, there's nothing in there again on no kill. It's no references, no kill. It's, that's, it's a misused term a lot because everyone has their own different definition of what no kill is.
That's why we didn't put it in the contract.
Yeah, and I think that was important for us. So, um, but I can say again, today we're, we're following the contract, we're in compliance with the contract, but if there is a, uh, growing need in the community for additional space, that's not contemplated in the contract.
Well, I, I, again, I would just say if, if there were concerns that it might have an impact on space, then either the amendment should have been rejected by the commissioners three years ago, or they should have negotiated with us on, on how to address that.
Yep, well, and, and that's part of why I'm bringing it up today is, is we never know what the future may hold and, and there has to be considerations for change, changes in our environment.
Councilmember Bingle.
All right. I have a, a couple of thoughts here. So, um, a, a veterinarian is, is a doctor. I mean, it's not like a two-year community college degree. I mean, you're talking nine, 10-year degree to go through. They're, they're experts with animals. Uh, right now nationwide, we've got a 15,000 veterinarian shortage. Um, and so when we talk about going out and getting another veterinarian or something like that, I don't know that it's as easy as, as we think it is. Um, but Scott, would you just talk about the conditions of the facility before, um, the new director came in? As I went out there and I saw it, I saw pictures of the facility and what it looked like. Can you describe all the extra kennels, the feces, the urine? Can, can you sort of describe that for us, not just from a condition for animals, but also a condition for the employees that are there?
Sure. Thank you for brought it up.
Okay.
Um, we had, I've, I had first went out to Scraps about, um, two years ago and it was, uh, I, I had seen the, 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 the facility and you could definitely tell every place you walked through, there was a strong odor of animals everywhere. Um, I found that there were geese and rabbits and ducks, things that I didn't realize that we actually took, first surrendered. There were kittens in, um, offices, there were dogs running around in offices. Um, kind of struck me as odd, but you know, it was my first time going out there, um, but definitely a strong odor moving around. Um, about a year later, I went out there and what we discovered in going through the facility is that there was a rodent infestation. There were rats running all the way around, all around the, uh, facility. And the solution at the time was to trap the rodents, go out in the field behind Scraps and release them so that they could come back into our facility. There was piles of dog food that were laid on the ground, various places of the facility that the rodents were getting into. There was animal feces, animal urine, um, up and down administrative offices. Um, there was a heavy ammonia smell throughout the facility. The community room was unusable. I, I couldn't even be in there for more than five minutes, I had to go outside. It was in disrepair. There was not active, um, taking care of the facility for our employees and for our animals. And, and I apologize for that to the, to the community. A huge effort has underwent the last year to go back in there, hire a, um, hire actually a, a pet, a rodent extermination company to rid those of them. They have no place in a facility with humans and, and other, other animals. Uh, we had to hire professional cleaners to come in here and, and completely commercially clean and sterilize the walls and the floors throughout the facility. Um, we had to get rid of the, the cages of just placing animals anywhere and everywhere throughout the facility. We had to get really firm on, we're not, we're not a pet surrender agency. You go to shelters if you want to do that. We don't take in, um, storks and, and ducks and geese. Our, our responsibility is domestic animals. Um, so we really had to do a lot of work to restore the condition of that facility that was left in, in disarray, um, before our new leadership came onboard. We went up and, and, uh, made sure that we've done some good inventory and stocking of the, of the food, because that's our, it's our, um, food bank, if you will, for animals. So we have now all of the donated food on shelves and stuff that the, you know, a rodent couldn't get to. We're still finding, um, we're still finding, uh, situations where, um, we pull out a piece of equipment or something and we find signs of rodents in there. We have a, a walk-in, um, freezer as we, as we receive animals that, um, have been killed on the side of the road, um, that we have to bag them up to and, and go to our crematorium that we have out there. The director at the time walked, was walking around and had a, the, the employees noticed a, a strong smell and couldn't figure out what it was coming from and, and finally tracked it back to our, our freezer. And it had, it failed, the compressor failed on it. They walked inside and there were dead carcasses bagged up that were up over the waist, walking in because they were never dealt with. So there's all kinds of other things I can tell you, but it was, it's not a, not a good situation that our current director inherited. But it's, I can tell you this, it doesn't look like that today. It's a clean environment. We've, um, organized it very well. It's a lot more, if you walked in there from the community, you don't have that really strong pet, you know, urine and feces smell and, and the, we don't have a bunch of, um, animal cages sitting in administrative offices either.
I'm gonna, um, request that we, uh, close this portion of the discussion and perhaps the two of you would consider, um, meeting with Scott again to iron out some of these things and, and then come back to us with what you've decided upon. And if anybody else wants to join the group, that's great. Have to keep it to three. Scott, would that be something you'd be interested in?
Yeah, I understand that, um, Garrett Jones, your city administrator, has been, uh, identified as the point person for the, um, dispute, um, stuff. And I'm hopeful that we can resolve that quickly. I will say though, that in order for us to resolve that, your ordinance needs to be repealed. We, we can't, um, operate with the ordinance as it is right now. As we sent in the letter, it's non-binding on the county because it's not in conformity with our contract. So we really need that to be, um, repealed and then we can move forward with resolving the disputes.
So why don't you meet with Garrett first?
Well, we've got City Legal here, I'd like to hear from them if we actually need to repeal this.
Sure. Lyndon, nothing like being on the spot.
I, I think that conversation is more appropriate for us and to Garrett to take up with Scott and we can come back and, and report to council at that point, but I, I'm not sure that that's something that we're going to talk about on the dais.
Well, I guess it would just makes me very uncomfortable that we can't have a conversation and that the only ability to have a conversation is if we repeal an ordinance that we passed. And I just, I disagree with that. I don't think that's the right way forward for partnerships, collaboration, good outcomes, anything.
And that's why I'm asking that the two or three of you meet with Garrett, meet with Lyndon and craft a path forward, whatever it is you decide legally.
Yeah, and I'd like to just make sure that, that legal is involved in those conversations.
Absolutely.
Good.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, we, we have, we have that, um, we have had that conversation with Mr. Anderson and, and we're working on that, we're getting, working on getting a, uh, time for all of us to meet, so that's our plan.
Okay, thank you. Scott, any last words?
Yes, and again, we're committed to making this work for, for us. I don't, I'm hearing from you that even though you have the ability to cancel your contract with us and, and that's fine, we don't, you're not beholden to stay with Scraps, you can go and do what you, whatever you want to on your own, um, if you don't like the services that are being provided. But we do think it's better together and, uh, we're committed to doing that. But likewise, it's, it's not good to have a ordinance out there that is in conflict with our, with our, um, code. Um, the last thing I'll say is thank you, uh, Councilmember Bingle for coming out and visiting Scraps. I think it was very helpful to, for you to go out there and see the operations in action, meet our team as well, and they appreciated that.
Thanks very much, appreciate both of you coming down. All right, uh, Mr. Boston, we're gonna have, we have kind of a hard stop at 12:30 because I think two of us have another appointment to get to.
Well, we're gonna be talking tomorrow.
So we've all been, I'm sorry, what?
And we're gonna be talking tomorrow, collectively as a group. This is, this is kind of just, let's fly 30,000 feet above the prelim budget that we received, let's talk about it, let's talk about what we're, uh, anticipating for tomorrow, um, and kind of move into the, the next stage of discussions.
And in that vein, we all received a, an email from Garrett that outlined some of the, um, rules of, uh, going forward with tomorrow's, just reading them, can't think and read at the same time. So just the rules of decorum, yes?
And I, I want to, I hope we touched base on the article this morning that was in the paper, um, regarding slush fund.
We will fly over it, yes.
We're starting to hear, we're starting to hear comments.
And I would just like to, uh, clarify one thing in what Garrett said, because I did speak about this yesterday, that questions should come only from electeds as the decision-makers and be addressed to the moderator. Questions can also come from our budget director as well, which is you.
Okay.
It's, it's meant to focus on the council and not council staff that are LA's or initiative managers.
Understood.
Okay.
Understood, yeah. And, and really what I wanted to do is obviously I've taken a few, um, passes through this budget so far, as, as many of you have, I've printed it out for each one of you, uh, flagged two key spots in it, one obviously being the memo, um, the second being kind of the summary of, um, how they closed the deficit gap from the $21 million number to roughly, you know, a $100,000 positive surplus at this point. $21 million number to roughly, you know, $100,000 positive surplus at this point. You know, I don't know if we want to have me ask specific questions that I'm seeing or let's just have you engage in the conversation as I'm reviewing this right now. So in the essence of time, I know we only have about 20 minutes. I just, I just really want to quickly go through first page. Again, we're not quite going to be, well, I don't want to say we're going to be at 30,000 feet, but we'll probably be at about 10,000 feet today. So just on that first tab, which is I believe the top one there that you see, it's going to show the CFO, Ms. Tanya Wallace's memo that summarizes kind of how they've closed that gap. And again, I apologize for how quick I'm going to run through this, but just in the essence of time and knowing that we have two hours tomorrow, let's just do it quickly. So the right size of the fire relief pool to maintain minimum staffing based on staffing model. I agree with that. I agree with the consultant's analysis that we can remove those 13 positions. Again, that's 13 positions that's been removed and roughly each position is, as they're budgeted within the budget, is about 100 and, let's just say 120,000 for rough numbers if you include salary and benefits. So there's obviously some other savings that are going in there. I would ask for council to dive a little bit deeper on what those savings are. I know there is a reduction in fire overtime year over year. I know that they are moving toward, you know, they're pushing the needle towards that to reduce it more and more. They've, they're, we've had this conversation before that they're going to be close in 2023. We'll see soon. I believe Jessica Stratten is going to be briefing at least high level that on her Q3 review. But that's something that we need to be conscious of and kind of ask the questions, the pressing questions of what happens when? When is the triggering point of when we say, okay, we have to do a change in services? Because in March, we see that overtime is, is going over budget at that point in time because we obviously don't have the ability to wait until June, July, August, September because as you all know, we're, we're pretty dry on unallocated reserves. Continue managing hiring practices and elimination of some vacant positions. When I view the overall general fund, I don't see very many vacant positions being removed from the budget. If you look at account and that's further on in the actual budget itself, there's not a significant decrease from '23 to '24. The other thing that I also saw that was a little strange to me is I know David Moss gave a presentation to you all the other day during committee saying that there was going to be an increase of five positions for HR. I did not see that count within the actual count of the position count. I know that we had, council had, they had reduced our positions for 2023 because right now we're in flux. We have an LA that is working for two different council members right now. So there's, there's a little bit of confusion on kind of where that staff savings is going to come from. Again, remember sustainable staff savings or sustainable personnel savings really isn't going to happen unless you remove those positions permanently from the budget. Contrary them or only funding them partway becomes a significant challenge because A, who is going to be managing that in 2024? So if you say, okay, I'm only going to fund a position for 50% of the year, who is the, who is the one that is responsible to say, okay, I can't hire until July 1? And if I do hire before July 1, then I have to let go of another position and I can't hire that position. And on top of that, as we've heard from many of the department heads, a lot of the positions and the new hires that we're hiring on are not coming in at step one. They're coming in at step two, three, four. All of these positions currently right now are budgeted at step one. So if we're saying, okay, we can't hire until July 1, but then we bring somebody on at step three, the savings is, you're going to go over budget for that specific, that specific position. So really asking some really pointed questions on how that's going to materialize is going to be important. And again, remember that's, that's not, that's not a sustainable solution of right sizing the personnel budget. I think these are great strides forward, but I don't think that that's going to be something that's going to help us long-term.
So can I just ask a quick question? So we're looking at continue managed hiring practices and the elimination. So what you're saying is you don't see a lot of vacant positions?
No, no, no. I do see the vacant positions.
You take them out?
Yeah.
They have to be permanently taken out?
Correct. So that's what the council's done over the past two years is they have done an analysis of the vacant positions and removed vacant positions. Remember, we have a structural gap and basic arithmetic says that if we had in 2023, we had a $230 million budget and a two, of revenue and a $230 million budget in expenses. And we know that because of our collective bargaining agreements, the personnel expenses of approximately $200 million, because we're about 85% personnel-centric, is increasing anywhere from five and a half to about 10 and a half percent. Now, I'm not talking about just wage increases, I'm talking about overall cost of compensation. So let's split the baby on that and say seven and a half percent. That seven and a half percent cannot be absorbed by the 3% growth that we're seeing within the general fund revenue growth. So that's why I think it's important that the administration is now saying that, you know, we need to start talking about that measure one and we need to start talking about property tax, property, property tax levy lid lifts because the general fund cannot sustain it. So what we're, from my point of view, we're, we're again putting quite a few Band-Aids on this, rolling the dice, hoping that a tax passes. But if it doesn't pass in 2024, 2025's cliff is going to be even more significant than 2024. I, you know, remember, I think I had said the 20 to 40 million deficit was going to be in 2024, either a year, maybe two ago, that that's where we're going to be at. While we identified $21 million, that also doesn't include track, which is about another $10 million cost. And that doesn't include public safety capital, which we know to be about $5 million each department. And fire has, did not get any sort of public safety capital allocation in 2023. So in reality, that's another $25 million added onto it. If you include $5 million for fire in '23, $10 million for police and fire in '24, track as $10 million, and then the $20 million deficit that we're having. So while, again, like I said, it's great strides in the right direction, it's a more difficult conversation than we're having right now of just closing this gap.
Okay.
And again, I know I'm short on time, so just moving forward a little bit further. Increase fees for departmental programs on the right sizing revenue to align, so moving down to the next, I'm sorry, the, the next table there, which is right sizing revenues to align current needs and economic pressures, which is about $2.7 million. Closing that gap, I mean, just, just to show you, I mean, is, is only closing just over 10% of the original gap. That doesn't even include capital or trend costs as it stands. So maintaining the 1% property tax budget increase, there's no, shouldn't be any questions there that the mayor is putting it in the budget. Transition to a full cost allocation plan over the next three years. I talked to Jessica Stratten and Jake a little bit about that yesterday. High level, from what I understand, is there were certain departments that were not being charged the allocation of general fund services such as accounting, human resources, et cetera. They had a list of departments. Now they are including all departments that are using those services. So that increases the revenue brought in. Shared revenue adjustments, I would, I would encourage you to ask some pointed questions on what exactly that means in addition to the increased fees for departmental programs because I don't have a lot of detail on that. The increased solid waste utility tax related to 10% increase, I don't think that that was anything that was necessarily done, but that is just a reaction to the increase in rates that we were, that were already passed. So we, we approved the increase of rates for solid waste by 10%. Say for example, consumer A has a $100 solid waste, and I'm not saying that this is what a solid waste bill is, but say it's $100. Now it's increased to $110 instead of $20 coming to the general fund at $100 for the bill to be, it's now $22 that comes. So it's, it's just a simultaneous reaction that happens with no change within the general fund or the operations. It's just, it's, it's a subsequent reaction to an increase in rates.
But Matt, didn't we suggest something else?
And that's coming down below.
Oh, sorry.
That's coming down below. So last is bridging funding gap to meet immediate needs. So there's obviously $10 million that is closing this and I believe that they've, that Tanya has done a good job at identifying, at identifying that this is just, again, one time, one-time levers that can be pulled. Consolidate and restructure public safety SIP debt. I've talked to you about this before. So generally, when we had done SIP debts for SIP loans, internal loans for vehicles, police or fire, we had those loans at a five-year term. The reason that we had those at a five-year term is because per IRS guidelines, that's generally the useful life of a vehicle. In fact, that is the useful life of a vehicle for, per the IRS. So the IRS says, okay, you bought this vehicle at $1 million. In year two, since we're declining it at five years or 20%, year two it's worth $800,000, year three, $600, and so on. What we're doing is we're saying, okay, we're not going to pay next year and we're going to push it out one other year. So, or at least from my point of view, it says one other year. So you're pushing it out to year six now. And so now you, in essence, have an asset that is on your books that you are paying off in debt, for debt that has zero value. Now, in reality, does it have a $0 value? No. And do I ever think that we're going to ever be in a position where we need to start selling police cars and fire trucks? No. But do I think that it is a bad precedent to set to be paying debt on something that doesn't have value? I think that that's, that's a, that's a difficult and pretty precarious position that we're putting ourselves in. Similarly, to kind of draw a parallel to your own personal finances, that's, that's like what a student loan borrower does when they borrow debt and they lose their, they lose their job, they lose employment, and so they go on a year forbearance. They have the ability to go on a forbearance for a year. Interest still accrues, so your, your overall expense is still greater and you're just essentially kicking the can down the road. The difference is, is we have a hard asset that this is directly related to, right? And we also need to be buying more assets at the same time. So it's, it's pushing it down the road. It's a tough decision, but it's.
And Matt?
Yes.
I remember distinctly, I'm not sure if it was this council, I don't think it was, that we wanted and we strongly urged, suggested
Yes.
That the levy, the 1% was going to be accrued by not going through the SIP loan process.
Correct. What it was going to do is the 1% that was going to be accumulated was going to add to the public safety allocation of funds. So say for example, your 1% brings you roughly $500,000 or $600,000 a year. Just using rough numbers, let's say $500,000 a year. Well, in year one, or in year zero, you were, you were allocating $6 million to public safety capital, of which you were paying, say, $4 million for the debt that was previously incurred. But in year two, you're paying, you have $6.5 million and there's a lesser payment to save 3.75 and then you have an additional like 275 for purchases of public safety. So you're increasing the overall amount that goes to public safety for capital, but that was hit with pretty hard resistance when that was brought up for, I believe, multiple years.
Yeah.
Again, moving along, use retained earnings for, of internal service funds to reduce costs. I, I want to be careful of how you absorb the reduced costs so that those internal service funds that we had talked about previously, whether they be employee benefit fund, accounting fund, et cetera, that it's using the savings balances within there. We're not reducing any costs overall. We're just taking the savings accounts within those internal service funds and using that to pay the bills. You'll see it in subsequent section, but there's, they're proposing a one-month medical rate holiday, which is basically saying, okay, we're going to take one month and we're not going to charge the employees or charge ourselves to pay for the medical benefits. We're going to take our savings account and spend into that, spend that, that, spend those savings accounts for that one month of expenses. The problem is, is per analysis, the, the medical expenses has been given to us at, from what I've heard from two different sources now, at an increase of 6% year over year. And so if we're decreasing into our fund balance and we're not, we're not turning, we're not going to say, okay, employees, you have to start paying 6% more for your overall medical benefits, nor is the city going to pay an additional 6%. Again, that 2025 hit becomes more significant because invariably you'll see 25 will increase as well. So then instead of 6% this year and 6% the next year, it's going to be 12 points, 12-point whatever because of the compound interest rate on that. So it's going to be an over 12, and again, I'm just using rough numbers.
Is that from unappropriated reserves?
That's not from unappropriated reserves. So general fund unappropriated reserves, it's not from that. It is from within those internal service fund reserve balances. So it is not against the ordinance itself, no. And then this is the big one that we've all talked about, traffic, direct traffic calming funds to public safety. Councilmember Cathcart, Council President Kinnear, and Councilmembers Oppone have all been in those discussions. There's only been very few of them so far. I would say, you know, in full transparency, there, there was a long way to go for council to allocate any funds to the general fund, whether it be for public safety, specific traffic officers. The nexus was still being drawn together. So the, the number that is on there of $2 million is not anywhere near the number that was even being discussed, nor is it the number that we, we put into the budget last year. So I think that there needs to be a heavier discussion with the traffic calming committee that makes those decisions.
And can you tell us what page the, the slush fund is on, that line item?
That line item is on page three of the memo. That's, that's pulling traffic calming over, that's pulling traffic calming money over to the general fund.
Is it actually listed as slush fund?
No, it's not listed as the slush.
Okay. So, so we don't have a slush fund?
It is.
All right. Good to know.
Yes.
Thank you.
So moving along, and then the temporary increase in city utility tax by 1%. Now remember, we, for interfund, interfund charges, we charge 20% to our utility departments. This essentially increases that from 20 to 21%. Like I said the other day, utilities departments, they, they are currently running very, very lean, as I know Marlene has told you all in the past few months, hence why solid waste is increasing its expenses so dramatically. If this maintains, there is no way that the, the utility department doesn't go into the red in 2025. So again, this is a roll of the dice saying, okay, we're hoping that we're going to get an increased revenue somewhere else, whether it be measure one or whether it be a levy lid lift. And if that doesn't happen, then we'll make even more dramatic cuts. Yeah.
Specifically on the utility side of things as we're talking about this, Marlene and her group, they're already planning for 2024 a rate discussion for us, correct?
Yeah.
And so in this, as, as you're talking about the 1%, that will not affect our rate payers at all, correct?
I don't believe, I mean, I can't speak for Marlene, but I don't believe that that is in their current projections for 2025. Now, you've already voted on the 2024 rates. Now could you, in theory, increase rates mid-year? Yes, that's, that's, that's the ability, it's a councilmatic approach to, to increase rates. I believe the idea behind this was saying, okay, we, we can hold it for, we can shoulder it for a year, but past that, it's either going to have to trickle down into the consumer or there has to be a reduction in expenses at that point in time.
And on this discussion, whether or not we were temporarily increasing the 1%, the rate discussion was something that we were going to have, we were going to have to have anyway because we hadn't been keeping up with costs with the 2.9% increase.
We always have to have those rate discussions. I mean, especially now more than ever. I mean, with, with what is happening in the environment, that everything is more expensive, whether it be personnel costs or just hard material costs, everything is more expensive. And maintaining that within the utility, the utility funds is, is more important than ever because again, they're very personnel-centric as well.
Yep.
Just real quick, the only other thing that I, I've got a bunch more things and I'll talk to you all about it tomorrow and I can bring these things up, but the revenue piece also very much concerns me. It's the sales tax revenue that concerns me and I've, I've talked about this all year long. I think administration was optimistic when they said, okay, well, summer is going to, you know, kind of push us back up. We had the same events that we had this summer that we did last summer. So I was, I was worried about that optimistic view. Right now, I've got us coming in at $57.5 million for 2023. Now remember, we budgeted for 58.6 million, so we're going to fall short, which is an impact for impact for 2023. And if all things are constant, if everything else goes to budget and we fall short at that $1 million, that is a hit to the reserve balance at the end of the day, right? And then likewise, if we're saying, okay, we're building our 2024 budget based on that $58.65 million that has a 4.6% growth, we are overshooting that, and that's actually about a 6.7% growth from where we're likely to land, when right now, year over year, from '22 to '23, we're below 2% year-over-year growth, which is incredibly scary if you think about that from the consumer spend of things, because that means we are not even beating inflation as it stands right now. So it's problematic to know that our consumer spend is going that drastically down. So to put an optimistic view, an optimistic lens on that sales tax number is dangerous.
Yeah, I had a question about that, Matt. A little more in the weeds about what that projection is, because we just got a report yesterday at STA where we're coming in under budget. So they're using a more conservative estimate where they're coming up with $3 million of the year.
Yeah.
So when you're like, oh, sales tax isn't coming in very well.
Yeah.
We're seeing other agencies that are overperforming what they projected their sales tax to come at. So I guess I will be asking STA what they're using that could help inform maybe a more conservative estimate here.
Yep.
But I would need to know a little more specifics of that.
We pushed back pretty hard last year in 2022 in building 2023's budget. There was an optimistic viewpoint of what 2023 was going to look like.
Do you remember what that was?
Well, if you remember correctly, there was three different scenarios. One was optimistic, pessimistic, and realistic. Suffice it to say, we haven't even made the pessimistic viewpoint yet. So we settled at about a 3.5-ish growth rate in sales tax, and we're obviously, you know, the delta is about a 1.5, if not higher, drop than that. We were trying to say, the council was trying to say, that we don't see that. We see consumer spending drastically slowing down. But coming off of the heels of the '21 to 2022 growth, that was 20% growth year-over-year, it was where we were able to land with that kind of low 3 number.
Matt, would you send us, if you have an optimistic, pessimistic kind of projection that you could send us? That might be helpful.
For 2024?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And do we know what other municipalities in Spokane County are using for their projections?
For 2024?
Yeah.
I don't, I can look at that. You know, that would be, yeah, that's something that...
Across the state.
Yeah, across the state. I mean, I know that the 4.6% was driven largely by what the state was presenting, by Dr. Jones' report back in Q2, so July-ish. I'll be interested, he presents next week at study session, so I'll be interested to see how that goes down, because I can almost bet that it's going to be drastically lower than where, than the 4.6 rosy picture that we are at. So we'll see. But yes, I will look into what other municipalities in the area are doing.
All right. I think we're three minutes over our time.
Yep.
If there's any other questions, thoughts, nothing, okay, then we will, thank you, Matt. We'll adjourn our study session.
Thank you.